I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Persing.
Derek.
Snyder. Bartella. Tru. Eister.
We need a motion to approve the ministry reports of the fire department, police department, engineer code office, and public works.
Great.
I'll second.
Bartella?
Yes.
Tru.
Yes.
Eister? Persing?
Yes. Any specific audience comment on any agenda items before you?
Does that include the burning?
Yes, that would be an agenda item, yes.
Yes, I would like, Regina Russell, I would like to ask a couple of questions, please.
You might want to wait till we talk about this. I mean, you can give a comment now, but the question to answer would be like, what we can talk about.
So that would be later on in the agenda?
Yeah, when we get to that.
Alright, thank you.
It's up to you. Go ahead and wait till then. Okay, just, alright. Redevelopment Authority update. The Redevelopment Authority has voted on this, but I just wanted to, I don't know, Michael's not here, I don't know that we need to pass anything. It's just, I'm just going to announce the advertised for legal bids. Jamie is handing out with CDVG. She's doing whatever you have to do for the proposal, so everybody has a package of that in front of you. And that's just to continue the blight program that we have in the city.
They don't matter.
Oh, they don't matter, okay. Alright, and Jamie, what's happening is Jamie Trotter from CDVG is going out for proposals for legal services related to decontamination, site control, acquisition, demolition, and disposal of blighted properties within the city for a three-year period. Proposal will be accepted until 1:00 PM prevailing time, September 27th. So, anyway, I'm just announcing that they are, she's out for legal bids, and we'll let you know how that comes out. Also in your packet, I believe you have, under Redevelopment Authority, two resolutions. I'm not exactly sure why Michael wants this either, but these are the properties already done, but I think it's because of their inner packing, they must want them passed. And this is clarity where the City of Sunbury has asked that the City of Redevelopment Authority acquire and move blighted properties. And it goes down to whereas the City of Sunbury Redevelopment Authority held a public auction for the sale of a property located at 160 Linden Street in Sunbury on August 8th. Therefore, it may be resolved as follows, the City of Sunbury Redevelopment Authority held a public auction on that date. Proceeding to sale shall be placed in City of Sunbury Redevelopment Authority bank account for use of future blighted properties. Notice of this resolution shall be made available for the review at the city clerk's office. So I'm going to make a motion if we adopt this resolution, this is all stuff that has happened in the past. I'm assuming there's a chain of command here that Michael wants to follow, and that's why we're doing this. So I need a second.
Tru?
Yes.
Eister? Persing?
Yes.
Bartella?
No. And on the back is the exact same thing, we've got 1106, 1116 Miller Street. Make a motion if we accept that one also.
Eister?
Yes.
Persing?
Yes.
Bartella?
No.
Tru?
Yes.
And I'll apologize ahead of time if we didn't need to do that, but they're in there. While we're talking about Redevelopment Authority, I do want, I know it's down here at the bottom, but while we're talking about it, tomorrow at 6 o'clock, we auction off a property at 121 Julia Street. And then at 6:15, right behind that property, there's actually 1031 North River Avenue, they were actually tied together, but we're going to, they are set, we're going to auction them all separately. And then we're going to go out to 1126, 1128 Wilburton Street at approximately 6:30, and auction that property off. That's a big double house, a big lot that's out there, and that's up for auction also. The people that have been coming to the auctions have been notified by email or however we're notifying officially. But again, it's been advertised, it's open to the public, everybody's welcome to attend. And again, that's 6 o'clock at Julia Street, 6:15 to 1031, and 1126, 1120 Wilburton would be at about 6:30. Please, I'm looking right there, Megan, she sits right there too. How about, let's go to SRI.
Okay. I just wanted to let everybody know that the Laker Festival, Bunnies Brew Festival is September 21st, but we only have 200 hard copy tickets left, so if you want tickets, click them now. We have 47 left in the office, Derek, I'll be fine this week. We're also finalizing the Keystone Communities application for designation to create a Main Street slash Elm Street combination project area. Our Spark Committee is still waiting to hear back about the NPP tax credit program. The veteran banners will be taken down in November and cleaned and returned to those that wish to not rehang their banner. And also to let you know that a neighborhood yard sale is this Saturday, September 14th, from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And we did receive approval for our application for the 1,200 block from Market Street, Streetsave.
Okay. Do you have any add to that, Megan? No?
No.
Okay, I just thought you were sitting there, all dressed up for it, so I thought you had something. Okay? Alright, thank you very much. Unfinished business, second meeting, outdoor burning. We passed this on the first reading, about a month ago, I guess. It's open for discussion, but what we passed, and I know there was many discussion after that, what we passed is primarily just a little housekeeping, at least it's how I interpret it, a little housekeeping to give the authority that who should be enforcementist and who shouldn't be enforcementist. The question, I believe, amongst everybody is, you know, how much more you guys want to add to this? So like you say, everybody has it, so it's pretty much the two or three big changes.
Yeah, the only changes I thought we made was under 53D, I thought we added lot lines to that. Must be stepped back from the lot line. And we were away from any structure, combustible, and so it made a minimum of 200.
Well, it says fires must be kept at least 10 feet from any structure or combustible, exterior wall.
Yeah, and we also said lot line. Then under 53A, I think we should put at the end of that, like, any duly authorized employee or something like that. Could also, in the event that none of these three people would be available.
What section is that?
Under 53A.
A.
I guess we probably.
Under enforcement. Where the police department, the code enforcement officer, the commissioned fire chief?
Yeah, especially since two of those people are the same guy at this point, I mean, there's a chance that you probably could use, you know, another, anybody that says a duly authorized person, you know, sort of like that, if anybody could enforce it, if they were given, you know, the chief or whatever, so you know, he's going to take care of it.
Mike, what's the fire department, Mike, what are you, how many people are you interested in, just yourself as a fire chief, or?
Yeah, I think we should give to the chief staff, yes.
The chief staff?
Yes.
Five would be.
So that'd be five.
Just five of us, yes.
Are you talking about Joe? Do you want people in addition to that yet?
Just one last one that says, any duly authorized employee, you know.
Well, if you had the entire police department, you had the code officers, and five, why do you really need one?
Let's just wait until the reason.
Who else would you have on, Joe? Like one of us?
Anybody that would be available to take care of the duly authorized one of these people. It's just a bail say, but I don't know, it's over your head.
That was a swat, thanks.
There's 19 people right there.
Never mind. Lot line's the important thing.
Well, let's talk about your important thing. Are you saying fireworks, you can't leave 10 feet from any structure or combustible over there, so if no different, you're talking about a lot, if there's nothing built there, you still have to be more than 10 feet away from the lot line?
Just any typical construction is the same way.
Well, what if, what if nothing's going in there, what, I guess I have to.
That's going to avoid confrontations down the road when somebody who has lived next door to one of these fire pits wants to put a garage in, that a neighbor has a fire pit 10 feet from the fence. And the neighbor wants to put up a garage, you shouldn't have that fire pit.
Or won't be, because that's considered a structure.
Well, the structure isn't there yet, you're just, you're just injuring our future use of that property.
I don't know, this is more than we can get here.
You're going to have, you're not going to make the guy tear you, if he has a permanent patio thing built in, you're not going to make the guy, if you want to build a garage next door to me, 6 feet away, we're not going to make the guy tear down his.
That's what I'm saying, we shouldn't have him build it there for him, so he'll run into that problem down the road.
Oh, you want to stop the guy from building his garage?
No, it's a pertinent pit, but intended to be.
But if it's already there, are you telling me we're going to tell the guy, yes, to tear it down? You're not going to, that's clear.
If it's something bought, if it's going to be bought at the store, then why can't you just move it?
Why not move one, I'm talking about the permanent one, so. But I'm assuming what's in here anyway is going to be grandfathered, if it's permanent, it has to be grandfathered, we can't make, we're not making anybody tear it. Right.
Probably going to be a chimney, it's just a pit in the ground, it's nothing that's really big enough. We had that issue with the other one. The last week or someone's one that we could get their beginning of the year or turn some labor day that was built on fire.
Well, the one that I'm aware, I'm correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, we had somebody call and said there was a 10-foot fire outside, he got there, it was about six inches of flames. So that's all I'm after in this whole thing, is you're on the angle, he supports the fact that I want to be able to tell the police officer, when you go there, tell them to put it out or don't put it out, simple as that. You have the authority to do that, so I'm just looking for some common sense interpretation, at least not necessarily tell people to tear down the garage.
That was one that wasn't a store block, more landscape when it was a home later. Remember you agreed to that one the last minute that we talked about it, that that one didn't meet our code.
Any comments out there, you're on as well?
Yeah, I'm sorry, that's right, you wanted, Regina, you wanted to.
Yes, thank you. And I, I, I think I'm following Councilman Bartella, because where I live, I have two properties on the side of my house, and my backyard, I would think, is like 10 to 12 feet. So, from what I'm reading, it makes me feel that my neighbors can burn as long as they feel like they're walking 10 feet away from my property. But they're still going to be close to other structures like the fence that surrounds the property. And I have to tell you, a lot of people are very ignorant when it comes to lot lines, especially tenants. So I don't know if I'm following all of this correctly, but I feel that the footage away from the structure should be more.
More than tenants?
Yes.
Well, as far as tenants, it does say in here that a tenant would need approval from his landlord, so hopefully the landlord is up to, up to some of the lot line definitions.
I just know if I wanted to do this burning, which I don't, if I was to put it in the middle of my yard, I would not be 10 feet from any structure. I would be, you know, less than 10 feet from both neighbors.
It's mostly for the lawyer yards, he's not going to be able to do this.
I do, sir, I do have a comment, through Bingman. As we're talking about the lot lines thing here, you're right in that you will run into people with, anybody that has one built now, having to grandfather those people in. But now you'll run into also then, okay, the slippery slope of, okay, I built one, and now keeping track of who's grandfather, who's not grandfather. So I would be for leaving it just with 10 feet of a structure as you have it now, instead of trying, because as Regina said, a lot of people are ignorant of their lot lines, they don't know where the property lines are, they don't know what's, I mean, because there's, a lot of times there's 10 feet difference of where the lot line is versus where your fence is built, you don't know where that is necessarily. So I think, I think pushing it to the lot lines, adding that lot line is going to get into a major mess. And especially when it comes to enforcement, and if you put the grandfather clause in, which you really have to do, it's going to make it a nightmare. So that's, glad to add on that.
Any other public comment?
The time, that's H, where you say 1:00 AM. I would humbly request that you make that change, because my neighbors, at 11 o'clock at night, I have to call the police, because you have an ordinance, a noise ordinance for 11:00, and they're still making noise at 12, 1:00, 2:00 o'clock in the morning, where you have to call the police and ask them to come. And a lot of times, they can't come, because you have a shortage of police officers, and they have to deal with things that are not as small as coming and telling people to go inside or stop making noise. So 1:00, can that be addressed and revised?
So what's your suggestion, to make that 11:00 to go with the noise ordinance?
Yes, sir, maybe even 10:00, because many of us have to go to work, and you're in bed at 9:00, 9:30 at night, so that you can get up at 5:00 and be to work by 7:00 or 8:00. Is there any way that maybe, I don't, I don't know, about the weekends or something, but 1:00 AM, that means that somebody can go home tonight and start burning till 1:00 AM? And it's a weekday, and, you know, that doesn't make a difference, people work on the weekends. 11:00.
Well, that is just. Okay, thank you, yes, ma'am?
So just 11:00, good. As far as people sleeping, that's, everybody's on swing shifts, I grew up with a swing shift, my father, and you just have to learn how to work with it, that's all. And seven kids, my mother says, you know, so I was raised with this. So I mean, you know, but everybody works different shifts, they all, you know, so you just, 11:00 is a good time, 1:00 would be great, 11:00 would be alright. Those are my marshmallows.
Okay, any other comment? Yes, sir?
Getting back to the fire pits now, as far as the flames, you said you'd get a call that the flame was shooting 8, 10 feet in the air, and they get there early. Well, from my past experiences, seeing people start their fires, they're using some kind of like either gasoline or a starting fluid, you use a barbecue grill, and that's what happens, you put that on, you light it, you've got 10-foot flames for a prompt, so maybe maybe five minutes before that finally dies down. It's the starting the fire is what's really the critical point here.
But you're right, people do that with charcoal grills, because they don't know what they're doing.
They're not using common sense, and that's, that's probably where you're going to come into your biggest problem with this 10-foot, you know, stand or.
But that's, that's unenforceable, that's, you're never going to.
That's what, same as how you.
You don't, that's why I'm saying, that's why, you can't make this too, I agree with Mr. Bingman back, but we need to, we can't make this, so it's unenforceable, I can't keep mad at things. Like I said, I came in here today with something that I can tell the police department, there's no question about this, this is what you have to do.
Once, once these fires are started, they're perfectly good, they're good, because you don't have much of a flame. And, you know, most of the time, if they're burning the right type of wood, it's when they first start, it's when you have your problem. We just seen it, just the other night, what, three nights ago, across the street, I mean, they were shooting 10 feet in the air, sparks were flying, and in five minutes, it just died down to almost nothing.
Right.
And then that, and it wasn't good enough, because he must have ignited it against the fire again.
Got questions? Guys, what do you want to do here? The only thing we've really changed so far is, the two things we talked about changing, what's in front of you, is the lot line, they all brought up, and people mentioned 11:00 versus the 1:00, I don't know that any of them are life threatening, but.
No. Can I sit out and make a fire?
I think 11:00 coincides with the news where you stayed, whether I think it's a bad idea, to be honest with you.
Alright.
So less, less calls for a police department, 11:00 to 1:00, you know. Another shorthand.
I sort of have to be with it, like the gentleman said, if most people don't know what their lot line is, if you don't know the fence down your yard, you're not going to know what they're giving you. Well, to keep things moving, since we're done talking about it, what's in front of you, the only suggestion we have now is to change. But you guys, Joe wants a lot line, I don't necessarily want it, I can.
And Mr. Bigman had a good point, running around, serving everything, so it's just tough to find out where the lot line is a lot of times.
Right, so in front of you is the ordinance that we passed in the first reading, the only two changes would be open fire set, or number H, which we're going to change from 1:00 AM to 11:00 PM. And on 53, we define the commissioned fire chief as the chief and his assistants, which is five people. So we have five, the entire police department, 12, and two enforcement, code enforcement officers, or whatever your code enforcement would choose.
Oh, there's three there, that'd be.
Plus, we're saying, if there's five next year, whatever it may be, that would change, but we'd have to come out on that, plus the three departments.
For a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion.
Persing?
Yes.
Bartella?
No.
Tru?
Yes.
Eister?
Yes.
Approval pay invoice invoices, Todd's not here, everybody's seen the statement that was sent over, like, you should have seen it anyways, sent over to the internet like he always does. I'll make a motion, since he's not here, approval of paying invoice vouchers reported, 28,009, 2632, and liquid fuels, no liquid fuel today?
No.
Alright, so 28,009, 2632. I'll second.
Did you say 28,000?
28,009, 2632.
Bartella?
Yes.
Tru?
Yes.
Eister? Persing?
Yes. Tax exoneration in front of you, there's only one person on there. I'll make that motion, we accept that, need a second.
Tru?
Yes.
Eister? Persing?
Yes.
Bartella?
Yes.
Audience comment, general items. Anybody want to bring anything up, particular? Yes, sir?
Yes. That on Laker and Walnut were daycare, used to be, anybody remember the daycare?
Yes.
Does anybody know what's going in there?
I heard there was a, that's your bar.
A general, yeah, there's been rumors that there's going to be a generalist club going in that. Hi, doll. There's just rumors around.
I heard that the other night, yes, I don't think so.
Right, that's Laker, can, 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 can. Well, it's been going around, it's been going around down there, been passed around the neighborhood, and the lady asked me, because she has little kids there, and she goes for a bus in the morning, and she was chased away from there by one of the guys who was working in there, okay? And she pulled me in, she talked to Delway, and Delway said the other, so it's a big rumor then.
But it's still illegal in City of Sunbury.
Okay, just, I just want to clarify that.
I broke your heart from time.
Yeah, well, they say it was right around the corner, you know.
I haven't heard that one, so that's.
I heard that the other one.
It was, um.
That you can, you can watch, at least tell the neighbors when you go back home tomorrow. Anybody else? Yes?
Actually, I did want to bring up that this, this committee of SRI is working on a marketing grant in order to market.
He said the tractor trailer, but you can't get out of your car?
Thank you. I want to mention in the back, hi Brian.
Hey.
Brian's in the back, that's what happens when you come in late, buddy, you don't get the front row seats. But just let me mention that Brian is part of the self-advocates from Northumberland County. I'm like, exactly, I apologize for that, coordinator, co-coordinator, you and Ben, I guess?
I'm the coordinator, yeah.
Oh, you're the coordinator, okay.
Yeah.
But anyway, I just want to introduce you to Brian, in the next, well, next month for sure, we're going to be announcing a plan about the, when you talk about the seven, what we turned into, the community gardens up there on Bond, the 7th Street Hill, which pretty much turned into disaster, because we had nobody to run them, and we were constantly up there cutting weeds down and that. But if you're familiar with the garden area next to the Degusty Library to the left, that area there, which is wonderful and maintained and taken very good care of, that is Brian and his group and what they do in that area, so they're going to take that same concept, mix it in with a community garden, we're still going to have an area there for four or five different families, if they want to use the community garden, we're going to clean that whole area up, they're going to be in control of that, and I just want to let you know, Brian's sitting back there, and like I say, in, definitely in October, we'll announce exactly how that's going to work. Get rid of that eyesore that we, you know, we had a house there, we tore a bad house down, get rid of the eyesore, then turn around and pretty much create a new eyesore by not maintaining what we had there. We didn't, we never really had a true effect of what we wanted to do, other than let people, you know, grow vegetables there, and we had that, but there's too, it's too big of an area for everything that we need, but between what Brian and his group are going to do for us, and like I say, have it all set up, I'm looking forward to it. So I just want to introduce to Brian, so everybody knows that, but I'm sure you're always looking for people who want to help you, if anybody wants to get involved in that program, you know, contact down here in City Hall, and I'm sure Terry can, we can get you hooked up with Brian and his group. Because it's going to, it's going to take a lot to get that set up, and hopefully for next spring, will be, things will be happening. They did have a banquet, what was that, about two weeks ago, I guess, Brian?
Two weeks ago, we had pork and sour cow, we were able to grow about 20 pounds of potatoes in the community gardens, by the Degusty Library, and then we had a group of people who were really, they were already wanting that, and we were getting it, we made some roommates out of town, and the whole free there, so probably about 50 people, that was good. Yeah, we look forward to being part of the organizing, we're going to need all your help.
It's great to have you part of, you know, part of the community, making the community a little better, and every little piece of ground we take and make it better, it makes us all happy, Brian, so we really do appreciate that. I wanted to brag a little bit about that banquet, because there was a lot of sour cow out there, a lot of potatoes, and I've already known it's 7th Street, so you did good, you did good. So we're looking forward to announcing that next month, and then we'll come out with some details, and like you said, you're always looking for people to help us, so we'll see if we can get you some volunteers, too.
Absolutely, thank you for watching, Mr.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any other comments?
I have a question, question about Walberton Street. I drove up through there the other day, that's a nightmare.
The construction.
They say tractor trailers go by and you can't get out of your cars, there's, there's just.
Oh, the parking.
They had that cement slabs in between there, that's scary. I can see the clouds going crunch, but it's just, they should have had more room for the cars to go through. I can't see that garden piece going up to the center, they have the cement, cement, and the bike run. Why didn't they just put lines down? It's dangerous.
Right, it's a regular, it's 14-foot wide street, it's a, it's a standard street size, I think it probably looks a lot now, or I got to get out there myself since it.
My friend says I can't get out of my cars, the trucks go by. So it's just.
Well, see, but you've been spoiled of that, because the street's too wide, you could do that, the rest of us are in the same situation, now we're all equal, I guess. No, I'm not aware of, I guess what you're saying is, when the traffic flow is happening, you can't get out of your cars, are you saying?
Yes. But it's, I didn't enjoy driving down at all.
Okay.
Just a thought.
Anything else? Yes, sir?
Mr. Swatter, I'm in the process of battling with Johnson Corporation. I'm the street sweeper, it's been down for the last couple of weeks, I think everybody knows that. We're struggling with it, the company we purchased from it went out of business, Elias Johnson, but Johnson's name's still on it. I'm sending it down to Valley Forge tomorrow morning, I got municipal services out of Philadelphia involved, which Johnson from North Carolina gave a call and helped us out with the problems we're having. We bought a lemon. There's no evidence of doubts about it, I mean, the process that we've been going through the past couple of years, and one trouble from another to another, I mean, brush is going backwards when you go in and touch a switch, they go in and out when they want to, they pick us up when they want to, or don't want to, I mean, it's an ongoing problem. So tomorrow morning, two of my guys are taking it down there, they're going to look at it, reevaluating the whole piece of equipment for me, and best case scenario, I hope they take it off his hands and provide us with a big piece of equipment. That's where we're at, and believe me, it's, it's every day on the phone, and it's an ongoing battle, I've been in touch with all kinds of people, and. And it's an ongoing battle, I've been in touch with all kinds of people, and... Today, they said, listen, my bosses are on me, get it down here, and I said, it'll be down tomorrow morning, so at least we're making people listen, so...
The kind of problem that you're seeing now is these knuckleheads that cut grass and mow grass, they throw it down the street. Now it's washing down and blocking up storm drains.
Storm drains, our street looks, it's terrible.
It is?
Maybe I feel glad just as bad about it as anybody, because our streets haven't looked as sturdy ever, and they're a very messed right now. Believe me, we're on it, we're trying to, because right now, leaves are going to start falling in the...
Oh, yeah, they are now.
We picked 75% of our leaves with that piece of equipment, so we got to get, they know the crashing issue we have here in town with it. I told them I, it was a rope here already, and I'm in town squares, so I've been really on them, so they're, they're giving us hope again. I hope by the end of the week, I have a good answer what's going on. So that's where we're at with it, and I apologize the way the streets look, guys, but this piece of equipment has been nothing but headaches since day one.
How many tickets been given out since it's been broken down? Just a question.
Because this isn't a street, this isn't a street sweeping ordinance that we have. It's a parking ordinance, that says, wow, we coincide, clean the streets. And we can run that all year long, which we don't, we run it and, you know, parallel with the street sweeper. So that's, you know, we, you know, say, no, you know, you park more than we're allowed. But that's not a street sweeping parking, that's no parking ordinance. Right, chief?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So please, don't be, park that piece of equipment, come back Wednesday, and just go run it Wednesday night as soon as I get it, so... But I guess, any other questions on it? My apologies to you, because I believe it frustrates me more than anything in the world. I mean, it's just, I know, but I'm the one that wanted to go to Johnson, we used to always buy a tin cone. I was in New York City, and I seen Johnson's all over the place, and I think, wow, New York City can't be wrong. What am I wrong? Like around a hundred Bloomberg, that, that's where we're at, okay, guys?
Anything else? Let me mention, we're in the final two weeks of the Music at Cameron Park, September 10th, Kill Scheme from 6:00 to 8:00. September 17th, Blue Dreams, and let me say again, when the, the...